Good evening and welcome to the Westminster, California Planning Commission meeting for May 3rd, 2023. I'm going to add just one item here to our agenda. It's not on the agenda. And I'd like to just welcome our new planning commissioners. To my right, we have Alan Hamadi, and to his right, Tony Bowie, to my left, Casey Wolpert, and to his left, Jamison Power. So they were recently appointed by the City Council, and it's a pleasure to have you all here. So welcome aboard, guys.
Thank you, sir.
So we'll start now, then go ahead and have a roll call. And Shelley?
Commissioner Anderson.
Here.
Commissioner Bowie.
Yeah.
Commissioner Hamadi.
Present.
Commissioner Power.
Here.
Commissioner Walbert.
I'm here.
Let the record reflect that all commissioners are present.
Okay, thank you, Shelley. Please join me in saluting our flag.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now we'll move into election of Chair and Vice Chair. At this time, we'll take nominations for the Chair. Anybody would like to make a nomination?
I will nominate Tony Bowie for Chairman.
Okay, we have a nomination for Tony Bowie. Any other nominations?
Sure, I'd like to nominate Don Anderson.
Okay. Any other nominations? Okay, then we'll go ahead and close the nominations there. Then we'll go ahead and, all those in favor of Tony Bowie for Chair? Say aye.
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 Okay. Okay. And then for Don Anderson?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Okay, Tony Bowie is our new Chair. And then we'll go ahead and do Vice Chair at this time. Any nominations for Vice Chair?
I'd like to nominate Don Anderson.
Okay. Any other nominations?
Hamadi.
Okay, for Alan Hamadi, okay, Vice Chair, okay. Okay, so for Vice Chair? Voting for Vice Chair, all in favor of Don Anderson?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and then Alan Hamadi for Vice Chair?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so Alan is our Vice Chair, and Tony is our Chair. So congratulations, guys.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
For record-keeping, for, you know, housekeeping, I guess, would we like to change seats at this time with the new assignments?
Or we, do you want to just, is everybody okay just staying here for now? And then you'll go ahead and chair the meeting, or do you want to sit here, Tony?
Well, I'd rather sit here, and you keep on with this for this first meeting, and then I will start from next time.
Okay, that's fine. Okay. Okay, so then we'll move on to report from Planning Secretary on late communication items.
Yes, thank you. We have no late communications to report.
Okay. Then ex parte, excuse me, ex parte communications? This is an opportunity for members of the Commission to state if they have visited. For example, in this case, we have the one case regarding the elderly care facility. If you've visited the property, or if you've spoken to the applicant regarding the property, or spoken to others regarding the property, this would be the opportunity to express that. I'll start things off by saying I did visit the property, but I have not spoken to anybody regarding the development.
I did visit the property in this, at the site. However, I didn't make any info at all.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anything else? Anybody else? Okay, good. Then we'll move on to special presentations, none. Oral communications? Okay, this is the time for anybody in the audience who would like to speak on any item that is not on the Planning Commission agenda, but pertaining to items within the purview of the Planning Commission. So if you have some Planning, Planning Commission-related issue that's not on the agenda that you'd like to bring forward, this is your opportunity.
Commissioner Anderson, at present, I have no speaker cards for oral communications.
Okay, so then, okay, so then we'll move on to approval of minutes of March 1st, 2023. And although four of you were not here for that meeting, I was, and according to our attorney, it would be appropriate for me to make the motion regarding these. And then the four of you are welcome to join in voting on the minutes, although even though you weren't here, you can still vote. So I would make a motion to approve the March 1st, 2023 minutes. Is there a second? Okay, seconded by Alan. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so unanimous. So, okay, thank you. Okay, then we'll move into public hearing items. And Steve, do you want to give us the rundown on the public hearing process, please?
Yes, I'll just briefly read the small introduction under Item 9. Anyone wishing to speak on an open and public hearing should complete a blue Request to Speak form that is provided at the entrance to the council chambers and submit the form to the Planning Commission clerk. When your name is called, please step forward to the podium and state your name and city of residence for the record. Each attendee will have three minutes to comment on each public hearing item. The applicant or their designee will have 12 minutes to speak. It will also be provided a three-minute rebuttal. With the exception of the applicant or designee, all attendees may only speak once. The Planning Commission may use this discretion to allow a speaker to exceed the allotted time, or may ask a speaker to return to answer additional questions.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Then that moves on to our first item, 9.1, 2020-1158, variance to be continued to a future date.
Yes, and thank you, Commissioner Anderson, Case 2020-1158. This, unfortunately, the applicant was unable to comply with the mandated notification requirements stated in the Westminster Municipal Code. So this, this particular item has to be re-noticed in the process of doing that. So this will come back to the Commission at a later date. So just as a record-keeping effort, we need to report that to you. And this is essentially a receive-and-file, but you don't have to really vote on this. This is just to inform you that you will see this at a future meeting.
Okay, so this, will this be at our next meeting of the 17?
We believe so, but we have to make sure that the notification meets the next meeting deadline.
Okay. Okay, so we don't need to take any action at this time. The Commission's been advised?
Yes, just receive-and-file.
Okay, so we'll receive-and-file, and then move on to 9.2, 2022-0370, conditional use permit and development review. So Steve, I'll turn that over to you and your crew.
Yes, I'd like to now turn it over to Sandy, who will provide her presentation.
Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, and Commissioners. It is my pleasure to present the planning case number 2022-0370 for the proposed. Sorry, hold on. Is it better? Okay. This is a presentation to representing the case number 2022-0370 for the proposed conditional use permit and development review at the property located at 8291 Westminster Boulevard. The proposed project site is located near the northeast corner of Westminster Boulevard and Monroe Street, and is currently developed with a L-shaped office building. The subject site is currently zoned mixed-use 40, and is intended for mix of residential and non-residential uses with the densities up to 40 units per acre. The project site is surrounded by other MNU 40 zoning districts to the west, south, and east of the project, with the city park located on the north side of the project site. The applicant is proposing to occupy the existing two-story vacant office building for the new elderly daycare, day healthcare center. It's going to be a mouthful of words. The subject parcel is currently developed with a two-story, 17,000-square-foot office building and 79 parking spaces on site. The applicant is proposing to occupy about 13,200 square feet of floor area for the elderly care center, and the remaining 3,700 square feet will be vacant for future office uses, and is not part of this project review. Detail of the proposed project plan will be further discussed in later in my presentation. Pursuant to the Municipal Code, Chapter 17.260, under the mixed-use zones, the proposed project requires a Planning Commission's approval of a conditional use permit to operate a new adult daycare center. The proposed elderly daycare, day healthcare center provides supervision of elderly person 55 years old and over with chronic illness and disabilities. Going forward, I will refer to the proposed project as the Care Center or the Pay Center, just because the words just get so long. Additionally, pursuant to the Municipal Code, Chapter 17.520, the proposed property improvements require an approval of the Development Review, or the DR, to ensure compliance with the city's rehab, rehabilitation, development standards, and design guidelines. The applicant is proposing to repaint the entire building, enhance landscaping, replace all windows and doors, create a new trash enclosure, and the addition of a new 800-square-foot metal canopy over the passenger loading area. The elderly care center proposes to have a maximum of 120 participants on-site at any given time. The project includes the supporting staff of 20 members per shift, with a maximum of 40 staff for two working shifts. The care center proposes to provide transportation services to all participants through a third-party, non-emergency medical transportation company. The care center provides services such as on-site meals, educational sessions, physical exercises, social and recreation activities, and personalized coordinated care. The proposed medical service is unique to the care center and is only an ancillary use to the center. The center will not perform surgeries, or kidney dialysis, or provide overnight care like hospitals. The medical use is only offered to the PACE participants and includes services as basic health checkups, vision, hearing, prescription drugs, dental, physical therapy, social service counseling, specialty referrals, and social activities. The PACE Center also offers transportation, as I indicated, to all participants from and to the care center. The applicant proposes to utilize 15 specialty vans contracted by a third-party company to transfer all participants with staggering pickup and drop-off schedule. Before you is a table that shows the, the different groups that are staggered by travel time. And the, the staggering time is about 15 minutes in between. So the first drop-off will begin at 8:00, and the next vehicle or the shuttle will come in at 8:15 and 8:30. And leaving the facility, same in 4:00, 4:15, and 4:30. The proposed business hours are Monday through Friday from 7:30 to 5:00. This is the project floor plan. All PACE services and programs will be conducted on the first floor and inside the building. The proposed first-floor plan mainly consists of activity day rooms with physical therapy, counseling, medical uses, and meal services as well. The proposed second-floor plan consists of PACE office use only with roof and roof deck and utility equipment areas that is not accessible to anyone. Additionally, there is a 3,700 square foot of vacant office space for future use, and it's not part of it, and you can see it in the purple rectangle. The parking demand study. The city's Municipal Code does not provide specific parking standards for adult day healthcare centers. For the parking analysis, the applicant provided the parking demand study to assess the parking demand for this type of land use. The study was conducted by a licensed traffic engineer, K-2 engineer, traffic engineer. And based on the parking demand study, the need for the care center is 71. And this includes 15 parking spaces for shuttle vans, eight spaces for ancillary medical use, 40 spaces for all employees. Although there is a 20 staff member working on during each staff, they are counting for all staff to be at the, on the, on-site, and the parking will be available for all staff members. Development review. The applicant is proposing to improve the project site, which includes repainting the entire building in white and gray color scheme, replace all existing windows and doors, and add a new 800-square-foot metal canopy over the ADA passenger loading area, constructing a new trash enclosure per Midway City Sanitary District standards, refurbish and improve existing landscaping, upgrade ADA parking spaces and ramps, and restrict the entire parking lot. It is staff's assessment that the proposed elderly care center is allowed with approval of a conditional use permit, and the proposed use will not negatively impact the surrounding area and uses. The project site has adequate on-site parking spaces, and project is consistent with the city's general plan and zoning code. The proposed center will provide a unique services, serving the needs of aging residents in our community and their families. And the proposed property improvements will comply with all regulations and standards. Therefore, staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve the case number 2022-0370 with the recommended conditions of approval. This concludes my presentation, and I could answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you, Sandy. Do any of the commissioners have any questions for Sandy at this time? Yes, Tony, go ahead.
I'd like to know, do, does the city have questions that have similar facility like this? And how is it operated?
In the past?
That's a very good question, and I'm not quite sure exactly how many we have. But the last one that I believe that we have approved, there is one off Beach and Hazard, I believe. The nearest cross streets, I believe, is Beach and Hazard. And it is a commercial shopping center, and it's a smaller facility than this particular location. But yes, we do have that facility. As far as like how the facility operates, I do not have that information in hand. I was not the project planner for that, so I will have to do some more research. But no, I don't have that information on that.
Okay. Any other questions for Sandy?
One question. You stated that the facility has adequate parking. Did it reach the 71 parking that city request? Did it provide the 71 parking?
Yes, so.
So it's available?
So maybe I should just ask. Your question you're asking is, does this project site have adequate number of parking?
Correct.
Is your question. So I have indicated that in the, earlier in the presentation, the site currently has 79 parking spaces. And based on the 15 shuttle vans and 40 staff members and the medical use area, based on those counts, 71 is needed.
Okay.
For their use, and they have adequate number of spaces.
Perfect. Another question. So when they drop off in the morning, how many vans will be at the same time coming in? Will that be inside the facility, or some of them be waiting on the street?
No, so there's a total of 15 vehicles. So if you divide, there's three staggering drop-off and pickup groups.
Yeah, I saw that.
So five per each group. So we, they, on-site, there is a four ADA parking in loading and loading areas. So those five vehicles could use those ADA. But additionally, there's an ample of parking along the entrances that the fifth vehicle could use, utilize, or they could just wait for the ADA loading areas to be opened up. But I don't think that will be an issue.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you for answering.
Okay. Any other questions? Yeah, Casey?
I have a question. You indicated that there were 3,750 additional square feet on top of that purple area in the grid. What about parking for that additional square footage? Are all 79 spaces allocated for the entire property? Or there are some reserved spots for that?
So that was addressed in the findings. And the 3,700 square feet, which is located on the second floor, parking standard is a little bit different on the second floor. It's one parking for every 500 square feet for office uses. And there's a surplus of eight parking spaces, because there's total of 79 minus 71 that the PACE will use. So there is an eight surplus that is dedicated for the vacant office use in the future. So parking is already counted for that.
Okay, are they gonna, was there any plan or anything in the report that indicates that those spaces will be reserved for that? Like segmented by suite or, or anything like that, or is it just going to be general parking?
That's a good question. We can require that.
My only concern would be that PACE decides they want to add a few more employees. Now their, you know, requirements went up from 20 to 25 because they're busier. And now, you know, a new tenant comes into that building and they have no parking.
So that has been addressed in the conditions of approval. So one of the conditions that addresses that is, if there is any change to the scope of the PACE Center, whether they have more participants, they have additional services, additional staff, they will have to come back to the city to get that modified. Now, the parking study, parking demand study is very specific to the current proposal, and any future changes will not apply. It will not, the current parking demand study will be not able to apply to future uses. Therefore, they will have, the applicant has to come back with a new parking study to make sure that parking will be adequate.
One more question. I believe the current tenant or recent past tenant was also a care facility in that location. Do we, do we have any information on that?
I did do some background research to see what type of uses were in that facility. There has been various different types of office uses, like tax services, cultural center. They even had like a studio where they did like tutoring studio. But I don't remember if there was adult daycare there. I don't, I don't specifically recall seeing a license.
Okay, just curious. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I do have another questions. And this question is one question, but it has four issues in there. So would you please joke it out, whatever I will present, so that you can answer me one by one? The first one is the operation of that facility. Is it enrollment open to the public and equally open to every people without discrimination based on anything? That's the first one, enrollment. Secondly, about the safety to the care recipient and to the visitors to that facility. The reason I bring it up, because it may be liabilities to our city in the future if we give the CUP to this facility. That is enrollment, safety, liability to the city, and hygiene condition of this. We have to make sure that they meet the code standard of hygiene, so that the city will not be liable for anything in the future that the care receiver will put the burden to our city budget. So that is for issue, and I really concerned about that. To protect our city before we give the approval for the CUP.
I think we can address some of those questions. The first, the first question pertains to the idea that visitors come into the site. I believe you'd asked if visitors come to the site. Our understanding of this use is that visitors are not coming to the site. And when the applicant comes up, you can ask, ask them again to confirm that. But this facility, as it's represented to us and to the Commission, is that there are staff people, and then there's clients coming to the site, and that's all. It's not a place where people come to visit family members or relatives or friends. They're just there for the day. They come, and then they return back to their homes. In regards to health and safety issues, those are all regulated through different areas outside of the land use authority that we have. There's, there's requirements of the Health Department, the State of California, and other regulatory agencies that require that the applicant comply with all the applicable regulations pertaining to hygiene and safety. And again, that's a question that could be asked of the applicant, just to confirm that. Our, our main. Our, our, our main focus here in the planning commission is, is this the appropriate land use for this particular area or not?
Okay. Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
No, I do not.
Okay, 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 good. Thank you. All great questions. Good. Okay, then at this time, we'll open the public hearing, and the applicant will have twelve minutes to speak, and all others will have three minutes. And Shelley, do you have any request to speak forms?
Yes, I do. Our first speaker will be Ramin Tasbishi.
Hi, Commissioner, hi, Commissioning Team and all the public folks here. I'm Ramin Tasbishi, part of the architecture and design crew that came up with this project for the 360 PACE.
Okay.
One moment. Our next speaker is Luke Tharazzi. I am so sorry.
Hi, Planning Commission, thank you for your time today. I'm Luke Tharazzi, and I serve as the CEO of 360 PACE, and thank you to Sandy and Steve for your support through this. Certainly can answer any questions for you. We do have a slide presentation, I don't think, should we?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can bring it up. That's okay.
Yeah.
Just to give you a little background and context on, on the project.
I have it on, okay.
Okay, great. This is just a title slide, just showing what our goal is here, is to deliver culturally competent care, all-inclusive care, coordinated care for the elderly population in Westminster. If you go to the next one, what is 360 PACE? I think you have it in front of you, you can see it's a little small font, right? But it's, PACE stands for Programs of All-Inclusive Care for, for the elderly. It's a program that's been around for a long time, codified in Medicare and Medi-Cal or Medicaid nationally, and it really is designed to provide comprehensive care in interdisciplinary manner to seniors. You can see, I know Commissioner Bowie, you asked about enrollment. Enrollment's open to those that are fifty-five and older that meet certain chronic care need conditions. Typically, those that you would find that would qualify for a nursing home, what we call a nursing home, or a skilled nursing facility, so those that are the most vulnerable, most frail of the senior population. The goal really is to keep them active, to keep our seniors active, to keep folks thriving. Bringing them to a center like this allows for that because there's social kind of cognition activities that occur, socialization amongst other seniors, physical therapy, kind of a one-stop shop, right? You can have your medical needs met, meet with your primary care physician, physical therapist, recreational therapist, and again, socialize with other seniors. The goal, I'll quote my colleague, Arnie, who's gonna come up a little bit later. I just spent, I came back from about three weeks in Asia, and he spent a lot of time in Tibet as a, as a monk, and he said, one of the best ways to judge a community or the measure of success of a community is to look at their elderly, because that is the outcome of the community, right? And so what we envision for the community is to keep the seniors of Westminster thriving. So instead of having folks kind of frail elderly sitting in a bed in a nursing home kind of, you know, kind of on the decline, we want to keep people active and thriving, and that's what we see. We want a vibrant community of seniors in Westminster. And so this, the PACE program is, is designed to do that. You can see here the benefits. Thank you, Sandy, for going to that slide, but the benefits of, of that really is that, right? It's to keep folks out of institutionalized care. I, I like to tell people, I'm a healthcare nerd by background. I've spent over twenty-five years in healthcare, been a hospital CEO, health system CEO. This PACE is very innovative in the sense that it's, it's really a cutting-edge healthcare. It's a delivery system that's designed certainly around the patient and in a comprehensive manner. As a hospital CEO before, you would kind of take care of sick people, right? People show up in your ER, people show up during flu season when they're sick, and then you admit them.
Yes, yeah.
Commissioner Anderson, it's a little bit confusing because there's several people from the applicant, so the commission may choose to allow additional time.
Okay, that's why, do you have, do you have some additional information you'd like to share?
Just another minute.
Are any, any questions for the speaker this time? Okay, yes, Alan?
After he finishes, David.
Oh, okay, yeah, so I'll, I'll just wrap on that.
Let you finish.
That, that, that the PACE, PACE is really designed to keep people healthy, and instead of wishing people sick, we're keeping people healthy out of hospitals, out of nursing homes, and that's what it really is designed for. So I'll, I'll end at that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah, my question is, you emphasize several times on the city of, citizen of Westminster. That means only Westminster people will receive this service, or somebody, Governor Grove will come, will also receive services also from different cities that will come too, right?
Yes, yes, sorry for the confusion around that.
Yeah, you got me confused a little bit here.
Sorry, and surrounding communities.
Also, I, I saw that shows, you know, service to minority Vietnamese, Korean, Chinese, but do you have somebody to interpret the language there for them in case they come, they don't speak the language?
Absolutely, that is...
They're all taken care of.
Yes, so that'll be our, part of our hiring process. Certainly on our team right now, we've got a lot of Vietnamese-speaking folks, Spanish-speaking folks, but that'll be part of our hiring process.
Another question.
Yes.
In regard to the parking, I know you meet the requirement for the parking, and it shows your staff, you have double shift, which is twenty-twenty, which is you're always gonna have twenty parking extra, because you're never gonna have all the staff at one time, right?
Right.
You have double shift.
Correct.
Five hours, five hours or whatever, split it, let's say, and then you're gonna have twenty parking extra every time. So if there's, if the visitor come to visit their family there, you have enough space for them to park, right?
Yes.
They won't be taking, they won't be loading the whole street.
Right, 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 exactly. And it, it is certainly not designed for visitors to come, like we explained before, that it's for the patient, but certainly there is available parking.
So let's say a daughter wants to drop, drop off her mom, she gonna wait for her mom. Where will she park?
Yeah, so we would have, yeah, we would have parking.
You understand my point, right?
We would have parking.
We just don't want to have problem on the street with the neighbors.
Absolutely, we don't want to congest the street, absolutely, Commissioner. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Yes, I have questions.
Yes.
Is this your first PACE facilities, or you have any other one which operate at other cities and successfully?
This is our first PACE Center.
I see.
Yes.
And all of your staff, are they specially selected or screened or qualified to take care of the patients or of the recipient?
Yes, sir, so we've put our team together, and I'll let others also tell their experience as well. Arnie and our team has started a PACE program before and very seasoned in PACE operations. My, me, myself, like I said, twenty-five years in healthcare, hospital CEO, health, health system CEO, have worked in all the continuum of care. Larry Nguyen on our team also has extensive experience in the post-acute space, which is home health, hospice, long-term care of the elderly. And so those disciplines, having coordinated care, working with primary care physicians, working with long-term care case coordinators, that's really the discipline there, but we have certainly higher staff as well that are expert in, in, in PACE operations.
Yes. Another question is about the architectural layout. Do you, can we show the A zero four on the screen so that we can talk in the same pace? Would you please?
I'm sorry, say that again?
A O four, which is...
Oh, the project plan, okay.
The floor plan.
Invite Ramin.
I have floor plan.
Yes, the general floor plan.
We all have the plan, but we would like to have the audience seeing it too. So would you please show it?
She'll get it on the screen in a minute.
Where's my plans?
I am an engineer, so I look at this and I know what the people should have and shouldn't have. First of all, I saw all the tables with four chairs, and this seemed to be a lot of people will be in here. However, they are not sitting there all the time, so they should have some place they walk or they do activities, or they will have a chance to at least lay down rather than sitting on the chairs with the table like this. Do you expect anything to help the people who come in there have a leisure and restful time, because they will be there from eight o'clock until three or four or five o'clock?
Correct. These, most of these chairs and tables you're seeing are gonna be foldable and pushed away, depends. We call this the day room because it's kind of multi-purpose. Sometimes there might be tables set up for bingo or for mahjong. Sometimes the tables might be taken away for other activities that they're gonna be doing. As far as leisurely and lay down, we, there are actually dedicated sleeping rooms, and quiet rooms, sorry, we put as quiet rooms on the floor plan, but we don't, you know, anticipate that to be a majority function of this day room or day room PT spaces that we have.
Okay, so you have, will have something for people to lay down in the afternoon after they have a lunch, and then they can lay down and rest. Is that right?
That's right.
Okay. Thank you for answering my concern, and I hope you will keep it as you said so.
Maybe he's referring to maybe having recliner, recliner chairs.
Well, that's a good idea. We didn't think about that. Yeah, we could have that. The quiet room will have its own bed, but, you know, chairs themselves, you know, we haven't spec the furniture yet. It's a good suggestion.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
Got a quick one. I'm really intrigued by the emphasis on culturally, culturally competent care, and I think it's really important for a diverse community like Westminster, and I'm, I'm just wondering, you talked about lang, you know, having availability of people who speak native language of the residents, or of the visitors. What other things go into that? I'm just curious.
Yeah, I think certainly that it, the look and feel of the interior, right, just kind of art and acknowledging the cultural heritage of the, the enrollees, menus, the food obviously will be designed that way. I know Larry could speak to some other things that, but certainly just having, I think just having staff that are of the community, understanding the community, I think, you know, being able to just have that lens on the world is important, right, and being able to bring comfort to folks that are, that are, you know, maybe a little out of sorts, if you will, right, and, and coming into a, could be a scary space, right? Medical could be a little bit scary, but yeah, just having that ability to, to translate and be able to talk medical jargon as well, but regular, regular speak, you know, also. So kind of, yeah, those, those tenants, I think, will be built into our programming.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
May I have one more?
Yes, sure, Tony, please.
I would like to turn to page zero six, please, the same plan.
I don't have the whole set of plan, I...
Okay, if not, then I can talk to you without seeing the plan. Zero six, that is rooftop of the facility.
Oh, the second floor?
The roof.
Yes.
I have the second floor here.
It, it's the roof.
The roof.
So...
It's an aerial view of the roof.
Okay. Do you see the...
Next one.
The, the page in front of, on the screen?
No, it's an aerial view, like you're in a helicopter looking down, and you're gonna see the roof, not inside the building.
Okay. I don't have...
Okay, talk through it.
Yes, okay, you have that plan?
Yeah.
The roof, so that we, you have around eight units, rooftop unit there, and please make sure that they have doing exercise, doing homework carefully to spread the, to distribute the air not only to the first, second floor, but equally to the second floor that are down there, so that all the people will be comfortable, and make sure they are not, are not enough capacity to, for, for the maximum people in there. And I hope that the planning will review their design plan carefully.
You know, I would just add that that's, that's something that is done through the building plan, building plan, plan check process.
Okay.
In our building department.
That is my concern only, yeah.
Compliance with the building code for ventilation, air exchange, and so forth.
Yes, that is what I have.
Correct. We'll have more detailed plans once we get the land use approval. We'll go through a building plan check, where it includes architecture and any other engineering, such as mechanical engineering and electrical engineering.
Thank you, I don't have anything.
Okay, okay, any other questions for the speakers? Okay, good, thank you. Okay, so our next speaker, Shelley, at this time?
Thank you. Our next speaker is Larry Nguyen.
Hello, Commissioner, my name is Larry Nguyen, I'm the COO of 360 PACE. I'm living in Westminster City, Westminster for the last twenty years, and to answer your question, this is the, for the PACE program, this is the first time in the city we will have a PACE program for, to, for the Westminster senior and for the other senior around the community.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, I, I have a question, Mr. Nguyen. You're indicated as the applicant for this project.
Yes.
You're the applicant, and somewhere I thought I read that, that you are a doctor?
I am not a physician.
You're not a physician?
One of our partner is a physician.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Okay, so is, is one of your group here this evening a physician?
They not here right now.
Okay, that's fine, okay.
Yeah, okay, any other question? So you are the owner of the facility?
Yes, I am the owner of the facility.
Also, the land too, right?
I'm sorry.
You're the owner of the land and the facility?
Yes, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Shelley?
Our next speaker is Arnold Posick.
Hi, I hope you can hear me okay. I have a voice problem. My name's Arnie Posick. I have about thirty years' experience focused on healthcare management for the senior I've worked on the development of hospice agencies, medical groups, something called IPAs, health insurance plans, and PACE. I started the first PACE program in two thousand thirteen and ran it for about eight or nine years until about a year ago. I, I left that position to join the 360 team here. The PACE program was called Bramman Centers for Senior Care. It was one of the highest rated PACE programs in the country. But PACE is a highly regulated enterprise. It's a little bit different than an adult daycare center, although it is an adult daycare center, it has some extra things in it, so it's very, very heavily regulated by the Department of Healthcare Services. It's surveyed, it's audited, it's the most regulated program I've seen in healthcare, and one of those is an annual, sometimes every two years, survey, and you actually, they look at every aspect from the quality of care, the safety of the site, the satisfaction of the participants, the quality of the food, how the family feels about the program, and as I said, the Bramman Center program that I started was one of the most highly rated in the country. It had one of the highest scores, and I only mention that not out of pride, but just to let you know that this will be a high-quality program. I would not be involved in anything other than that. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions? I, I have a question. You know, you talked about PACE, and it is, it sounds like PACE maybe is, is that a, that's a nationwide program?
It is, yeah.
And so is this... And so is this like a franchise of, of the nationwide program? Or is this an independent operation?
It's, it's not a franchise. So the Centers for Medicare and Medicaid, in their regulations, they represent, they have certain types of programs that are recognized from a regulatory point of view. So you can have something called, for example, a senior Medicare Advantage Plan, which is an HMO for seniors. That's actually in the regulations of CMS. It's a codified program within their regulations. PACE is another type of program, but it has the same standing as that Medicare Advantage Plan. So it's part of the regulations. Sponsoring organizations apply to the Department of Healthcare Services, which is what we did. And then you also apply to the Centers for Medicare and Medicaid. So you have to have approval from both the state of California and from the federal government. And that whole process is something that, you know, we're involved with.
Okay, thank you. Any other, any questions? Okay.
May I have questions? I am the one who bring up a lot of questions, but I would like to see the page number zero I have it here, but I would like to, all people would like to see it. Number zero three is about the, the overall view of the facility. And you can see the flow of traffic into the building and out of the building on Westminster Street. And I so worry, the parking lot is not a problem because you, they already do the study, enough parking lot. But the flow up in and out, in the morning, in the afternoon, it might be congested and maybe created accident for many people here. So please take a look at it and pass it to the traffic commissioner to take a look at it closely. When they go out, they should have enough space for them to move out slowly and merge with the traffic going eastward. And when they come in, same thing. They should go in smoothly into the facility without obstructing the traffic flow.
Correct. So the, you can see the site plan, which is on the right. What we're showing right now is double-loaded parking with two-way traffic. So, you know, they'll be coming in and out, like you mentioned. The shuttle vans are going to be parking in and drop off at the canopy, which you see is on the plan. It's like the blue, yeah, thank you for using the mouse. So we put it towards the back on purpose so that all the vans are coming in, into the site, and there's not going to be a queue on Westminster Boulevard. So that way we stay out of the street, like you're requesting.
Yes, that's my concern. I hopefully in the future you will carefully look at those issue before we have the approval.
I can address that because whenever an application is brought to the city that requires any type of development of a site or use of a site, the city has our comprehensive review process involving all departments, public works, engineering, police department, fire authority, finance department, Parks Department. Every single department in the city is involved in the review and analysis of every single development that occurs in the city. When this project went forward, the city's traffic division, engineering divisions didn't have any concerns with the proposed use or the general traffic flow. And of course, if those issues were present, we would identify those in our staff report and our recommendations to you. So I have a high confidence that that will not be an issue in this case. But of course, if it ever becomes an issue, as you indicated, sir, definitely that would come to the attention of the staff. And there is a condition, it's a general condition in all conditional use permits. If any problems arise when a conditional use permit has been issued, it can come back to the Planning Commission for potential revocation, potential modification. So the Planning Commission always holds that authority.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Any other questions?
No, I don't.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
Commissioner Anderson, I have no other speaker cards unless anybody from the audience would like to speak.
Okay, is there anybody in the audience who didn't fill out a speaker card that would like to speak? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and the commission can take this under consideration for discussion.
I'm making motion to approve it.
Okay. And I do have some comments and some suggestions at this point. And that would, we've discussed a lot of issues regarding the project and regarding the air conditioning and the quality of the care, which are all important issues. But from a planning standpoint, one of our key focal points should be the land use. And what does the building look like now? And what would the Planning Commission like the building to look like in the future? One of the important documents the city has is our general plan. And this serves as a roadmap for the, the community. Ours was adopted several years ago and it's been updated. And it gives a graphic picture of what we'd like to see the community look like. So I did visit this building and it was built in the 80s, so it's been around a while. It's still in good physical condition, but it does need some upgrading. And the applicant has indicated that they will paint and put new windows and doors in. But in, one of the areas that wasn't touched on was that there's a landscape deficit that a, a project of this size should have about, should have an additional 1,720 square feet of landscaping. Now, that is being, that is addressed in the staff report. And it is shown that there are options that they can meet in way of hardscape and other alternatives to reach that goal, and that's fine. And they're, they're listed. But one of the, one of the thoughts I had or concerns, I guess, would be, this is a question for Sandy or Steve, that there are a number of options that have been given in the staff, in the resolution prepared for the Planning Commission consideration. So will there be an opportunity, a landscape plan that will be submitted to see how well that all these conditions have been met?
Correct. So the city's code does not mandate to provide 15% when there's an existing non-conforming parcel. So the applicant has to do, to the best extent, to provide that 15, minimum 15%, but it's not a mandatory that they provide exactly 15%. So the condition has been addressed in the draft resolutions to provide certain, you know, deficit to make up for those. And it's actually quoted from the code itself. Those are the required.
Good. And again, you've indicated that will be, there will be an opportunity for staff to review.
They are required to submit the landscape plan during the plan check process.
Okay. And if, what I would like to see added to the landscape plan, if it's agreeable to the other commissioners, and maybe it's there, Sandy, maybe I missed it. But I did notice that there is only one of the existing planters, and I think all the planters should be saved. I think all the planters are, are worth saving and the plant, plants that are there. But only one of the planters had a concrete curb and it's cracked and deteriorated. The other planters just have some material that looks like they went to Home Depot and did it themselves years ago. So I would like to see if it's, if it's not there, a condition that would require concrete curbing in all of the existing planters to improve the appearance of the, of the site. It would go a long way. And of course, there'll be, the landscaping will be cleaned up, but the existing landscaping will be cleaned up and weeds removed, et cetera, and restored.
Correct. So another item that's part of the conditions of approval is that the applicant can look into providing decorative hardscapes and potted planters to provide the required landscaping. So we will be reviewing all of that.
Yep, okay, that's good. And, and one of the requirements, something I've noticed too with, with potted landscaping, we have an example on the Southwest corner of Beech and Westminster with, we have potted landscaping. And if you, if it's not adequately watered, there's a problem with, if the pots don't get watered, the landscaping dies and so you have dead plants in pots. So that's, want to make sure that the landscape plan would call out that the, any type of independent pots would be adequately watered. So we do have a motion by Alan. And would, at this point, would the commission and all second approval, but with the, I'd like to add a condition that the concrete curbing be a condition of approval with the
Mr. Hamadi, is that okay to amend your motion to, motion to approve with the landscape addition by, by Don? Okay.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Can I add one additional comment?
Certainly.
Or one additional question of planning?
Yeah, please.
Is there a requirement, I, forgive me if I missed it. Is there a requirement for any kind of surveillance to be put on the facility? Since it is a senior care facility and it's basically a medical concern, does the city have any requirements for the applicant to protect that with some surveillance?
No, no, no.
No city requirement at all?
No.
No. And as I mentioned earlier, our, our police department, all our safety personnel in the city have looked at this and that was not anything that they felt was a, been a concern for this one. But of course, the Planning Commission does have authority to add conditions if you feel that it's appropriate for the land use.
I think, you know, it might be something for us to consider or even talk about is because it's seniors and because there is just an issue of using that type of land for a medical facility or a daycare facility for seniors. It might be a great idea or a good recommendation at least to put into, you know, moving forward to have some kind of surveillance or cameras to protect not only the patients, but the applicant themselves and their property as well.
Where were you thinking of the cam, what, what would those cameras surveil?
Well, it would be just for personal protection of the inside, interior of the facility, patient care and things like going on.
Can I make comment?
And maybe even outside in the facilities and the parking in case there is, you know, records of crime or something that comes up down the road. But I know a lot of commercial use places in a lot of cities around are requiring cameras put in on any conditional use permits for restaurants and bars and whatnot, you know, just to keep the public safe and to keep the owner safe as well.
I agree with the commissioner on this, especially if there's anything happen. The owner will protect himself from, because everything is on record. And then the investigation will be easier with the cameras. I think should be in the motion.
Yeah, and I believe.
And it's not going to cost that much money. It's protection from both.
If there's a desire to add that as a condition, then I think we would need to amend.
Can I ask a point of clarification? But maybe, go ahead.
Okay. Oh, my only question to both of you is on the number of cameras, to be more specific about the condition of approval. Did you want to put two in the front, two in the back?
At, at least 16 cameras, in and out. Or 30, 32 is better. Two-system DVR.
Okay. Did, did you want to hear from the applicant at all about his input?
Inside and outside is much better. This way you see what, if the patient, if, let's say, one of the elderly patient fell down, she cannot sue them, say, oh, they pushed me or something happened.
There may be privacy concerned there.
I mean, not in the places of being checked out by a doctor, of course.
It was, it was more of a question is, does the city, do we have any say in planning that we can make that a requirement? I didn't know if there was any legal or precedent for that. We haven't asked the applicant if they even are considering that. I would assume that being a modern facility and going through the upgrades, they're probably considering that. But it was just more of a, a point of clerical concern. I don't know if we need to mandate it or we could put a recommendation in the, you know, in the plan for them, but.
Yes.
I would like to afford them the opportunity to say whether they're going to do that or not.
You do, the Planning Commission has the authority to add a condition. I could tell you that typically, if the police department has concerns about crime in a particular area of the city, they, they will add that as a condition, recommended condition. But certainly the Planning Commission has every right to add a condition if you feel that, as you, and you had indicated earlier, that, that to protect the property owner, that that would be something that could be made in the form of a condition. And as Russ said, I think it would be helpful if you do just, if the commission does desire to make that a condition, be specific about the type of surveillance system you'd like and the extent of the cameras so that we can make sure that when this gets implemented that we have some clear direction on how to enforce it.
Yes, Alan?
I think the applicant wants to speak.
Yes, we can go ahead. Okay, is, is the commission at this point, Steve, we can go ahead and the applicant has, would like to comment on that?
Yeah, I think, do we need to reopen the public hearing or just call?
It's just a question. You don't need to reopen.
Okay, yes. Yes, so if the applicant would like to come forward, if somebody would like to address that question?
Yes. So the way PACE programs typically handle the fact that we're dealing with very frail people is, first of all, for all the doors going into the center, they're typically delayed egress so that, because, you know, there, there are a fair number of people who have cognitive issues. So if someone were to leave and alarm were to, would go off. With, with some of the individuals who tend to wander, we actually typically put bracelets on them. It's like a wristwatch. And it allows us to sort of see where the person is if they were to leave the center. But of the 40 or 50 PACE sites in California, I've never heard of one having internal surveillance. That's something that's just not done. External would be another situation. I mean, it's, it's in the middle of a city, so I can see why you would want that. But internal surveillance is not something typically done. The only, the only one room where it's put is in the quiet room because there are beds in there, depending on the size of the room, one or two beds. So that if someone is sleepy or feels tired, they could go in there and rest. And with their permission or the family's permission, that does come onto the screen of a nurse. So a nurse can kind of keep track to make sure everyone is okay. But the staff participant ratio is very, very high. People are not wandering around on their own. If they need to go to the restroom, typically a staff is helping them. So it's very closely monitored.
Okay. Thank you. Any, any other questions from?
I would like to add to that. So you remember that he's talking about the high ratio. This is 20 staff for 120 people. That's a very high ratio, one per six, right, patients. Also, the concern we usually have in California with any kind of healthcare center, whether it be assisted living skilled nursing clinics or PACE, is HIPAA, right? And HIPAA is throughout the nation, but it's way more strict in California. And that's why, what Arnie was mentioning, if we're going to put a camera, we even have to get the permission of that patient, that we're going to be monitoring them. That's, again, the outside is something you guys could dictate, but I'd be worried if you were to dictate something on the inside that would conflict with any codes.
And then, and for those of us who may not know what HIPAA is, maybe you could just give.
That's the Privacy Protection Act.
For patients?
For anybody, yeah.
Anybody, okay. Okay.
Even in the hallway?
Yeah, because you'd be monitoring someone without them knowing.
Because right now, almost any hospital, there is a hallway cameras.
That's for security reasons and they do need, again, they get a HIPAA approval for that. So we would have to go through a process to submit this, just like we get approval to be a PACE center. We'd have to go through a whole approval process through another entity.
Also, on every entrance and exit, they have cameras too. In case somebody did some crime and ran away or somebody with Alzheimer's disease walked out of the hospital.
Right, that's why, so that's the delayed egress. So that's the one that sets an alarm. For fire code, we'd have to allow people to get out of the building. So we can't lock it. But we can put a delayed egress. I'd have to double-check the code if somewhere between five to 30 seconds, where the alarm was set, it would not open, but then it would eventually open and we would have enough time for someone to get there, to get them if they're trying to run out. Again, we just can't tell them not to go out, right? Security camera would be on the outside if you're really worried that we don't have enough staff to come grab them, right?
Okay.
Great questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I think too, we need to keep in mind that Planning Commission, again, is focusing on land use and not so much the internal operation of the facility. So. So I think if the applicant wants to put, if you, if the commission wants to consider exterior camera security?
Exterior is good enough.
Okay. Do you want, do you want to add that to the motion or do you want to just leave it as a?
Okay. Yeah, the motion will include approve the project along with the landscaping addition and also the surveillance cameras that are satisfactory to planning staff.
That are exterior, exteriors.
Exterior only.
Exterior, okay.
Commissioner Anderson, before we vote, can I read into the record the recommendation?
Yep.
So it just solidifies it, makes it a little easier for me later when I write the minutes.
Yeah, please, Shelley.
I appreciate that. The recommendation is staff, let's see, the Planning Commission approves a resolution entitled Resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Westminster approving case number 2022-0370, a conditional use permit to establish an elderly health daycare, an elderly day healthcare center and a development review to improve the project site located at 8291 Westminster Boulevard, assessors parcel number 097-401-25, with two amended, two added conditions of fixing the concrete landscaping and adding exterior surveillance cameras.
Okay, just a clarification, there should be concrete curbing for all the existing landscaped areas.
Thank you for that.
Okay, we've heard the, okay, are we ready for a vote? Do we, we have a motion in a second?
Motion by Vice Chair Hamadi and second by Commissioner Anderson and a roll call vote. Commissioner Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Power.
Aye.
Commissioner Walbert.
Yes.
Vice Chair Hamadi.
Yes.
And Chair Bowie.
Yes.
That motion passes five to zero.
Okay, thank you, Shelley. And thank you to the applicant and all the associates. We wish you well in your project. And I thank you for coming in, taking a vacant building and having faith in Westminster and investing here in our community. We do appreciate it.
Planning Manager Rat K, do you have something to add as well?
Just a brief statement, reading into the record is that the decision of the Planning Commission is final and must appeal by Thursday, May 18.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Okay, then we'll move on to, the next item is regular business, none, reports, none, matters from staff. So anything from staff that you'd like to share at this point? Steve?
Yes, thanks, thank you, Commissioner Anderson. And I wanted to, just a couple of quick housekeeping items for the benefit of the commission. And that is, in the future, if you're, you know, if you need to be absent or on vacation or anything of that nature or running late, we'd always appreciate knowing in advance. So we can, obviously, if we're running late, we can let the chairperson know. If you're going to be absent, we can also let the commission know so that we, you know, we're not waiting for you to, to attend the meeting. We'd appreciate that. And then as far as other announcements, I did want to thank the Planning Commission very much for your hard work. I know this is the first night that all of you are together as a commission, and we really appreciate your dedication and devotion to the city. And I also want to thank the staff, certainly Russ and Shelley and Sandy and others that you met tonight for all the hard work to make sure that you, you are provided with excellent information, and they always endeavor to do the best job they possibly can. So thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Okay. Yep, thank you, Steve. Okay, then we'll move to, anything else, Steve? Is that a wrap-up for Steve? Okay, anything else?
That's it for us.
Okay. Matters from Planning Commission. So we'll start with, we'll go ahead and start with Mr. Bowie, Chair Bowie. Do you have any, anything you'd like to say at this time?
I appreciate all of your work today, and I, the first time I be here, but I will take the position as the, the chair next meeting, and I appreciate all of your work. And you appointed me to be the chair, and I wish I sincerely will fulfill my duties for the city of Westminster.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Vice Chair Hamadi.
I am just very glad to be here and to be working with you guys. Hopefully, we could make the city better with every approval we could do.
Yeah, well, and that's a great thought, too, because improvement is incremental. And so every project we see, and I was really pleased with all the questions you asked. Obviously, all of the commissioners read the reports. You had good questions, and that's what's going to make a difference in the long run for our community, that we analyze each project and we make it the best possible for our communities.
Correct.
Okay, KC.
Thanks for having me. Thanks, Commissioners, for coming together tonight. Thanks for the applicant, and it was great to be able to pass that. I think it's going to be a great project. Thank you very much to planning for all your hard work going into this project, all the reviews, the traffic studies, the parking studies, everything that played into this. And I think with those few changes that we had, we're going to have a great, great project with the, the nice aesthetic touches that we're looking for here in Westminster. So thank you, everybody.
Okay. And Jamison, any?
Just echoing what Heather said, very pleased to be part of this commission, looking forward to the hard work to come. Very thankful to staff for all the work you've already put in. And congratulations to our newly elected officers. I know they'll do a fantastic job, and just looking forward to continuing to work. Thank you.
Okay.
May I have one more thing?
Oh, sir.
First of all, I appreciate the Mr. Anderson, who has been the chair for the past years, very successful. I hope that I can learn a lot from you. If I make any mistake or I'm, please, help me, and we can work as a team together for the thriving of our city.
I'm happy to do that, Tony, and we're, we are a team.
Yes.
Yeah, absolutely, and I, and I think it's great. And I'm happy to pass the torch to you, Tony.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay. Let's see, then we're up to adjournment, so we'll call the meeting adjourned. And to the next regular meeting on Wednesday, May 17th, at this time, 2023. Thank you all for your participation.
Thank you.